We'd like to welcome everyone to the Pope School's Robson County Board Meeting, August 12th, 2025. Please note that Mr. Henry Brewer is absent and Mr. Vonte Leach and Ms. Melissa Oceans is on her way. She was stuck in traffic on 95. At this time, we'd like to take a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, we're going to roll on into our Pledge of Allegiance. Next up, we have adoption of the agenda. I have a motion by Mr. John Simmons, a second by Mr. Crystal Monroe. All those in favor? All opposed? Approval of minutes. Motion by Mr. Crystal Monroe, second by Mr. John Simmons. All those in favor? All opposed? Revised open session, June 10th, 2025, had to be revised. Motion to approve. Motion been made by John Simmons, second by Mr. Craig Lowry. All those in favor? Let's have it. Information items. First one is 2025-2026 Board Committees. Mr. Cole, are you putting that on the screen? Is that on the screen? No. Okay, I'll share it. First, all the board members have the paper in front of them, but curriculum and student services, far as the chairs, Dr. Emmanuel, Henry Brewer, Dr. Terry Locklear, Crystal Monroe, and Bradley Phillips. On the grievance committee, you have Chair Mr. Craig Lowry, John Simmons, Melissa Ocean, Dr. Emmanuel, and Mr. Vonte Leach. On finance, we have Chairs Ms. Christie Fields, Dr. Terry Locklear, Vonte Leach, Crystal Monroe, and Bradley Phillips. On the policy committee, Chair is going to be Bradley Phillips, Melissa Oceans, Craig Lowry, Dr. Terry Locklear, and Henry Brewer. On the construction is chaired by Mr. John Simmons, Henry Brewer, Vonte Leach, Crystal Monroe, and Christie Fields. Mr. Terry Locklear.
Before we vote on that, Mr. Trey or Chairman Britt, I just have a comment.
It's the information item. We don't have to.
Thank you. I just have a comment. I would really like for the board to consider reinstating the Personnel or HR Committee. According to our Policy Code 2232 Advisory Committees, we do have the authority to create a committee and on a temporary basis. The committee that you, the assignments that you just handed out were for, you know, ongoing committees that we're required to create or to have ongoing, you know, annually. But I really think we should consider creating or establishing an HR Committee to really deal and discuss some of the, some of our staffing issues that are becoming more and more apparent every month that we meet.
Okay. Anybody, anybody else got anything there? Moving on, Dr. Deborah Dallas, Brandy Bullard, and Kim Demery for K-2 DIBELS 8 data.
Good evening, Chairman Britt, Superintendent Williamson, and Board Members. I would like to start off by introducing Ms. Kim Demery, who is our K-5 Curriculum Supervisor, and Ms. Brandy Bullard, who is our Early Literacy Specialist. These two spend an incredible amount of time supporting teachers with literacy skills and strategies, including support with DIBELS 8, which is our benchmark assessment that is given three times a year to students to assess their foundational reading skills. This evening, we are going to showcase our end-of-year DIBELS 8 data. Just a reminder that DIBELS 8 is a standardized assessment used to assess basic early literacy skills that are foundational for reading success. Now, a lot of times, you'll hear some terms used interchangeably. You'll hear Amplify, M-Class, DIBELS. So just a reminder that Amplify is the name of the company. M-Class is the technology platform for administering the assessment. DIBELS 8 is the actual name of the assessment. Word reading fluency is just an example of a measure that is included in DIBELS 8. M-Class will automatically assign color-coded performance descriptors to students' benchmark results. These descriptors are not focused on proficiency, but they identify students who may be at risk. Each of the following measures gives insight into how students are developing as readers. As you can see, there are several. You can see the measure, the actual skill, and what that is actually measuring. This slide just serves as a visual reminder of the progression of reading skills. When we meet with teachers, we always talk about starting at the beginning, which would be your oral language and your phonological awareness and phonemic awareness before you build and actually can move towards the reading for meaning. There should be all the data. So this just demonstrates all of the measures that are given at each grade level. So you can see some appear at more than one grade level, some appear in all of the grade levels. So I want to situate ourselves with this graph. So when you look at the bars, the bars in the black and the gray will represent state data. The bars in the blue represent our PSRC K-2 data. For each school year, you can see that the state BOY data, which is beginning of year, MOY data, which is middle of the year, and EOI data, which is end of year, are represented in gray and black bars. And our Public Schools of Robson County K-2 BOY, MOY, and EOI data are represented in blue bars. This graph shows the change in data over the past four school years. So let's go ahead and look at some of the findings for kindergarten. So over, nope, go back, thank you. Over the past several years, we've seen gains in the EOI data for kindergarten. We've moved from 58% to 62% to 65%. We are also slowly closing the gap between our EOI data and the state EOI data. We have a greater percentage of kindergarten students who are entering kindergarten more likely to be at grade level at the end of the year. In 2021-22, we had 10% of our kindergarten students who entered, who were ready, and that could be predicted to be at grade level. Last year, we had 16% of our students come into kindergarten being, being projected to be at grade level at the end of the year. So unfortunately, we still have a much smaller percentage of students entering who are likely to perform at grade level by the end of the year. When we compare ourselves to the state, the state's at 33%, and we have 16%. So we know that our students are still coming into kindergarten behind where students across the state are entering kindergarten. Our students in kindergarten, though, are making great gains throughout the year. This past year, they grew by 49% compared to the state's 39%. We went from 16% to 65% at the end of the year. Okay, looking at first grade. So over the past several years, we've seen gains in the end-of-year data in first grade. We've moved from 36% to 52% to 56% to 57%, so not as significant as what we see in kindergarten, although our growth pattern does mirror the state data with smaller gains over the past three years. We have a greater percentage of students who are entering first grade more likely to be at grade level at the end of the year. So if you notice, we had 39% come in. In 21-22, we had 15%, and last year, we had 39% who are coming in of limited risk. This is great progress for us over the past several years. Our students in first grade also made great gains throughout the year. They grew by 18%, which is the same rate that the state grew.
Ms. Christie Fields? Hit it again, Ms. Christie.
So I'm looking at your first grade. You were in beginning of the year and middle of the year. There's really no change. What does that mean to the parents that are listening to you tonight?
So we've had a lot of conversation about that. If you look across our, the last couple of years, we've been kind of stagnant from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. So we have a district team. We work with our regional team, and we've really tried to diagnose what's going on with that. We have a couple things that we know to be true. One of those is not all of our schools are staying stagnant. We had about seven schools that went down, and that's what's kind of causing that to level out. We're also finding that when we're trying to target skills, when I showed you that progression, sometimes we have teachers that will tend to try to target a higher skill that kids are not ready for instead of going down to the foundational skills. So we've been looking a lot at the IRPs that are put in place for first grade, which is an individualized reading plan, and we're looking at to see how teachers are actually targeting that intervention. So that's something we're going to work on this year because that is a concern because we've seen it for more than two years.
Dr. Emmanuel.
It's an easy explanation as to why students come in in kindergarten behind because a lot of it is the preparation they have before they start. Do they have reading materials in their home?
Right.
Have they had a lot of coaching by the parents? So it's very easy to understand why they score so low when they come in.
Right.
Also, the same thing happens with, I think, with Christie's question. Parents are very interested in their students. They're very into this DIBELS Amplify. They can say to me, Amplify DIBELS, they use them together, is to make sure when they get that baseline of their child, they want to make sure that they push them, push them, push them. Because, you know, they always, they ask, not always, sometimes, where is my child? They're very interested. What can I do to move them on?
Right.
Because it's very competitive among many parents to make sure that their child improves. So that's an interesting thing. But I have another one that carries over. What do you think happens to the DIP? In other words, they go through K-2 and they do very well on DIBELS, but when they get to the third grade, at the end of grade, they, what do you think? Why aren't those skills carrying over?
Well, I'll let you guys add in, but for me, K-2, the, the beginning DIBELS is really about the foundational skills. Only in second grade does it really start to touch reading comprehension. Third grade is all reading comprehension. So even though they have some of those foundational skills, right, and they might be a green or blue, and they're doing okay, it's that reading comprehension piece that we need to address more in third grade because that's what the end of grade is going to test in third grade, reading comprehension. It doesn't take into account any of those other sub-measures. Do you guys want to add to that at all? Okay.
I think you did a great job. Explaining that, but this goes back to the science of reading that the state is really pushing when it comes to letters PD. So this goes back to understanding that reading comprehension is a combination of language comprehension and word recognition skills. DIBELS 8 only assists your word recognition skills. So language comprehension goes back to background knowledge, vocabulary, and a lot of other components. So those are harder skills to actually develop, and that should be developed over time. That's kindergarten ongoing. Even as adults, we're still developing those skills. So it is harder to see gains in that area versus your foundational skills.
I, I guess that our concern is, I would have to say I or anybody working with Curricula, is what can we do to help with that DIP? Because we're saying that they're getting the foundations in K-2, but it's so radically different in third grade. There's somebody, somewhere, somehow, that we need to work with that DIP because it's obvious it's there. It's like they've forgotten the foundation. See, you got to start with a foundation and build, but it seems like somebody left a whole part of the construction out there with those children.
I might also go to, in second grade and third grade, the complexity of words are a little bit different. So multi-syllabic words, for instance, you have a lot of kids who are very successful at like CVC, those very small words. So consonant, vowel consonant, like cat. But when you go into those multi-syllabic words, it's very hard to break those down. So we're really trying to support teachers with how do we take those foundational skills and use them to break down those bigger words in order to help support them in reading those longer passages.
One more statement, Mr. Chair. Okay, you diagnosed the problem. You've diagnosed everything. You get an A. But my question is, what can we do, all of us, I'm not just saying you guys, what can we do to help solve the problem?
So one of the things that we're seeing, and just to go back to reiterate, so we've got to remember with DIBELS 8, comprehension is not assessed in kindergarten in first grade. So it starts in second. But to answer your question, some, we're trying to work with 3-5 and to understand that there still may be gaps with foundational skills for students entering third grade, and how can we close those gaps? So we're working with teachers on third grade and through fifth grade in understanding how can you take those skills block, which is part of the K-2 instruction, and merge it into the 3-5 instruction to make sure that we're closing those foundational skills? Because until we close those skills, we're not going to see the results on the EOG because they're not able to lift the words off the page.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And to your point, Dr. Emmanuel, one of the things we're also doing is when a student has an individualized reading plan, like I said, this year, we'll have a monitoring team that actually has to go through and vet those IRPs to ensure that teachers have selected the right skill to focus on. So right now, we've spent a lot of time building the IRPs and teaching them how to match it, but now we're going to have to start monitoring that differently so that we can intervene a lot faster.
Dr. Emmanuel, your question really builds a case for universal pre-K. We need our kids in pre-K. If we bridge that gap, that, and kids would catch up.
Right.
Again, you build a case that we've been building for years for universal pre-K for all kids.
Right. And so currently, Dr. Emmanuel, we have, I think, about 900 students that were in pre-K going into the 24-25 school year between our private site, Shining Stars, NC Pre-K. But that's, when you think about how many kindergartners we have, we average about 1,600 kindergartners. So that shows you what our percentage is still. So we don't have as many kids as we would like getting that pre before they come into kindergarten.
Thank you.
To Dr. Williamson's point of universal pre-K would be wonderful.
Dr. Emmanuel, you good?
I'm, I'm happy, not happy, but I'm good.
Mr. Craig?
Dr. Dallas just answered my question, the difference of pre-K and then kindergarten. How many kids do we have just not getting that pre-K and they're going straight into kindergarten too? Bad answer. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to second grade data. So when you look at some of our second grade findings, you're going to see that over the past several years, we have seen gains in the end-of-year data for second. We have moved from 35% to 39% to 47% to 51%. We are also slowly closing the gap between our end-of-year data and the state's end-of-year data. The four years, four years ago, we were only at 23% behind the state. Last year, we were 15%. So we are working very hard to close that gap and make sure that our students are prepared for the next grade level. A greater percentage of students are also entering second grade more likely to be at grade level at the end of the year. In 21-22, we only had 20% of our students entering ready. In this past year, we had 41% of our students who are entering ready. So that's a big difference because that means the teachers who are receiving those students, right, are having students in class that are more ready to receive the skills and the strategies that are being delivered. So that, that's positive for us. Okay? And to your point as well, how do we let parents know? Just a reminder that at the end of the BOY, the MOY, and the EOI, we do send home Home Connect letters to our parents so that they can clearly see where their child is. So if they want to know, how is my child performing, right? That's an idea. And then on the next slide, it shows you some of the, the text that it will provide to the parent of what that student needs for support. Okay, so we are trying to make sure that parents are aware of where their children are performing, and they're also notified if a child is on an IRP so that they're aware of what strategies are in place. Okay? Any questions?
Mr. Terry Locklear.
Dr. Dallas, for going back to that data, it looked like from the beginning of the year to the middle, there were, our gains were, were not as consistent as the state's, but we made higher gains at the end of the year. What, what do you think that, that's attributed to?
One of the things that we've discussed with that is sometimes it's the sense of urgency that's at the beginning of the year. Sometimes it's also just building in some of those gaps that I have. So if I need to be able to perform on grade level, I can't have a lot of pre-existing gaps. So a lot of times, when they come in and start the school year, we're trying to still fill in any gaps that they had from the previous year. So that's what they spend a lot of time on the beginning, is trying to fill those gaps so that they're ready to actually move on, and that's where you see the acceleration happen after the MOY to the EOI.
So, so what were you saying again about that sense of urgency?
Yeah, sometimes it's just making sure that we're targeting the right things. Once again, it's having that end in mind, right? Knowing what that assessment looks like. So sometimes it's just making sure we're targeting right away. There should be no waiting, right? We have our data. We should be moving on quickly. Any other questions?
Dr. Dallas, Ms. Bullard, Ms. Demery, thank you all.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Beta Club National Convention slash District of Distinction, Dr. Deborah Dallas.
Okay, so good evening, Chairman Britt, Superintendent Williamson, and Board Members. We are excited this evening to recognize our National Beta Convention Award winners. So the National Beta Conventions took place towards the end of June this year in Orlando, Florida. During the conventions, we had students who advanced from their state-level competitions who were invited to participate in a wide range of events and categories showcasing their intellect, creativity, and skills on a national stage. We are super excited tonight to recognize our students who participated in the national conference and actually placed. So I'm going to ask them to come forward. If their beta sponsor is here, they'll come forward as well with their administrator. So at this time, if we could have the board members, please come forward and line up in front of the podium.
Yeah, that's fine. And then we'll just have them come around and shake your hands. So just.
You're good. You're good. You're good.
Yep. Okay. You're right there. Yes, I will pause so you can do a picture. Dr. Locklear, you want to move up a little bit? We'll have them come right through the line, okay? Okay, so students, when I call your name, if you would please come forward, we also would like our administrators and beta sponsors to please join them as well because we know how much work you put into having these students actually showcase their work at the national convention. So from Pembroke Elementary School, we had Olivia Hunt. So if Olivia Hunt would come forward, shake your board member's hands, honey. Olivia had onsite art drawing elementary, second place, and she also placed tenth in the painting elementary category. Congratulations, Olivia. Let's give her a round of applause.
From St. Paul's Elementary School, we have Tico Villanueva Perez, who had first place in the performing arts elementary solo, duo, trio instrumentalist. So I'd say he's a national champion. From Union Elementary School, we have Dean Bowen, who also placed first in the recyclable arts elementary. So that sounds like another national champion we have. Next slide, Cole. And from the Public Schools of Robson County, Early College at RCC, we have Marley Pridgen, who placed sixth in the drawing division. She would come forward. All right, Marley.
Good job.
We have Ms. Navaya Bullard, who placed fourth in the jewelry division. If she come forward. Okay, not here. We also have Isabella Floyd, who was third place in performing arts senior solo, duo, trio dancer. Next is Ms. Vetica Zope. She was first place in the poetry division, so it sounds like a national champion. Good job, Vetica.
Good job, Vetica. Okay, and we also have Brian Diaz, who was third place Spanish 10th grade. He could not be here this night, so congratulations. I'm going to ask the board members to please stay standing. Mr. Britt, I'm going to ask you to come forward so I can make sure I give you the plaques. So this evening, we are excited to recognize all of our school administrators and our board for earning the prestigious title of National Beta District of Distinction. So the National Beta District of Distinction designation is awarded to school districts who demonstrate a commitment to academic excellence, leadership, development, and service involvement. In order to qualify, all of our schools must offer National Beta and induct qualifying students in grades fourth through 12th within every school. So we are so excited. So thank you for our board's support in Beta. So at this time, we're going to actually present the board with our National District of Distinction. So you guys can...
Good job, y'all.
Thank you. Thank you for the board's support. So at this time, we are going to call up our administrators. Some of their beta sponsors are here to please come forward. They will receive a plaque. Some of them will receive two plaques because they might have an elementary and a junior beta. Okay, so some of our schools have two. So at this time, Mr. Britt, I'm going to have you come here. I'm going to hand you the plaque. So we're going to start with Carol Middle School. If you come forward, please. I'll just put this down here. Next is Deep Branch Elementary. They have an elementary and a junior beta. They would come forward, please. Yes, sir. We have Fairmont Middle, who also has an elementary and junior beta. Next is Fair Grove Elementary School. Next, we have Littlefield Middle School. They also have an elementary and a junior beta. Next is Long Branch Elementary School. Lumberton Junior High School is next with a junior beta. Magnolia Elementary School is next. They have an elementary and a junior beta. Orin Middle School is next. They have an elementary and a junior beta. Oxendine Elementary is next with an elementary and a junior beta. We have Parkton Elementary School, who has an elementary and a junior beta club. Pembroke Elementary School has an elementary beta. Pembroke Middle School is next with a junior beta. Oh, should I say that? The Peterson Elementary School with an elementary beta. Next is Piney Grove Elementary School. They have an elementary and a junior beta club. Okay, our next school is Prospect Elementary School. They have an elementary and a junior beta club. Red Springs Middle School. They have an elementary and a junior beta club. Couple more, we're getting there, we're getting there. Rex Rennerd has an elementary beta club. Our next school is Rosenwald Elementary School. They have an elementary beta club. Next is South Robinson Middle School with a junior beta club. Our next school is Southside Ashpole Elementary School, who has an elementary beta club. Our next school is St. Paul's Middle School, who has an elementary and a junior beta club. We have Townsend Elementary School, who has an elementary beta club. Our next school is Union Chapel, who has an elementary and a junior beta club. Our next school is Union Elementary School, has an elementary and a junior beta club. We have St. Paul's High School for their senior beta club. Okay, we have Purnell Sweat High School, their senior beta club. Lumberton Senior High School. We have the Early College, their senior beta club. Red Springs High School for their senior beta. Yes. And the peanut gallery in the back wants me to say, save the best for last, Fairmont High School for their senior beta. And we did also want to recognize St. Paul's Elementary School, who could not be here this evening. So thank you. Thank you, board, for all of your support. Thank you very much. Good job. Good job.
All right, next up on the agenda, we have ESER 3 products, our project updates. Mr. Bobby Locklear.
Good evening Chairman Britt, Superintendent Williamson, Board members. Included in your packet was an, is or is an update of our ESER 3 projects that are continuing this summer. First, let me point out this was as of August the 1st. So, we have approximately 10 days of work that has been completed since this was included in your packet. But just to highlight some, work is still continuing at Lumberton Senior High. That work is progressing on schedule. I do believe one of the major concerns there that most of us had was, was the school gonna get clean? And it is my understanding that the students are working through that process. Switch gear has arrived and is stored in a bonded warehouse. I included that certificate of bond in your packet as well, so that we understand that once we get to Christmas break or time allows us, we will get that installed in the school. Our other three projects, again, are ongoing. St. Paul's Elementary Construction, you can see as of a week, over a week ago, they were about 95% along with Oxenine being complete. Our biggest project, and they're still working, I was out at the school one day last week. As of the 1st, they were 50% complete. As of last week, they are waiting on all the doors to come into those outside pods. It is my understanding that doors have been installed. At this time, they're waiting on glass. There will be some minor finishes that are gonna need to take place once kids get into the building at Pimerick Elementary. But nothing that we are aware of at this point that will prevent kids from being in the building on August 25th.
Any questions for Mr. Bobby? Thank you, Mr. Bobby. Next up, we have Communications Year in Report. Ms. Jessica Sealy.
Good evening Chairman Britt, Dr. Williamson, and Board members. What a night for student achievement. Can we just give everybody a hand one more time? It is my honor to share with you what all we've been up to in our communications department. I am a one-woman team. It is me here with all of my personalities, and we have staff meetings daily. So, we have a lot of fun in the communications department. We have a great sense of humor. I have before you our slideshow. Do you have any questions before I get into it? Questions or comments? Okay, let's get into it. Okay, so, communications. What does my department do? There's a lot that my department does. And the most important thing to share is that this is collaborative work, right? Although I am one person with many layers, I work with a lot of folks across our departments to make sure things happen and everything goes smoothly. So, if it was not for all the wonderful partnerships that we have in communications, we cannot tell the story effectively of the public schools of Robson County students and staff. So, this is just a brief overview. I think some people think I just ride around and take photos and post on Facebook. So, this is just a quick idea of what we're up to. We work on the website, social media, crisis communications. And also, I have a nice relationship with our local media partners to try to get our stories published. And Dr. Williamson expects two positive stories every week. So, we try not to let him down. We try to have at least two or more every week. So, that's what we're up to in the communications department. Okay. So, again, I'll just breeze through some of this stuff. We had a wonderful year. A wonderful year full of support for our HR department with recruitment, staff recognition, internal communication. I send, I send regular updates, which you all get every week, Monday and Friday. So, and then again, we are student-centered and future-focused. So, this year, we really focused on, which is always an ongoing thing in our plan, we always focus on building internal and external trust, supporting staff recruitment and retention. And again, letting people know we're transparent. If you have a question, just let us know, and we'll do our best to get you the answer that you need. Okay? So, some initiatives and some success points for the Back to School Bash. As last year, we had over 7,000 people attend. So, this year, we had the same thing as we had last year, which is a wonderful point of having over 7,000 attendees to our Back to School Celebration. So, can we give Ms. Brendon a hand for that as well? And then, I want to highlight our HR department. Our Career Fair, our hiring event last year, had 106 participants. And that is folks that came in and came through, and then 21 for recommendations. So, let's give him a hand as well for that. And again, so, last year, we had a teacher recruitment campaign, and it was a six-week digital blitz in February of ads for our teacher recruitment. And again, like I said, weekly staff newsletters, and I have our board meeting highlights up on Facebook for people to stay up to date on what we talk about. So, I'll have some of those fresh tomorrow off the press. Let's see, next for exciting celebrations, I would be remiss if I didn't mention Dr. Williamson being the Regional and State Superintendent of the Year. Let's give him a hand. So, again, we'd love to, we'd love to support these wonderful things that happen. And Dr. Williamson's leadership, it was such a pleasure to, to help in that process, for him to get the recognition he deserves as a wonderful leader. And we had award-winning work. We're recognized for our writing, marketing, and design from the State Postal Relations Association. Next. Thank you, thank you. Yes, the whole department was recognized. Thank you so much. All right, for our social media stats, reaching the community online. So, for our, for my numbers, folks, this is for you. It shows we have 30,000-plus followers. Our impressions from the period of January 1 to June 23rd. And it just shows our link, our link clicks, and what we've been up to, 5.31 million impressions. So, that's great. We're looking good and healthy online. All right, this is my really, I'm really excited about this. We, we actually had a 10% increase of media mentions, news media mentions, and a lot of it was great news. So, that is wonderful. And our stories, this is my brag point right here. If we paid for what we got in news media, it would be 5.91 million in advertisement value. So, that is a great value right there. Just, just pushing my department here. And we had a 95.7 positive or neutral public sentiment. So, that's great. Just gotta brag on my department. And this is how our work aligns with our strategic plan. I won't bore you with all this, but it just shows, you know, high-performance communication. Some of the stats we've had, our stakeholder engagement. I'm also a part of the Lumberton Chamber Ambassador group that they have. And also, for support for recruitment and retention, again, we highlighted the Career Fair on that bottom right. So, a lot of, lot of great things this year that we're really just proud of. So, what's next? So, what's next? We're looking at increasing our videos across our platforms, because a lot of people, like, it used to be pictures was the thing, and now it's videos. People have short attention spans, but they love to watch videos. And they get stuck on the algorithm. They get stuck for hours watching videos. So, we want to put more videos out there about our district, and expand our recruitment and employee recognition efforts on LinkedIn, and enhance our Instagram store usage for live event coverage. And again, continue to launch campaigns for school lunch and that new CTE center that's coming soon. Anybody have any questions about the report or any data? Dr. Emanuel?
Since you are a full department.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a budget?
I do. Well, Ms. Erica, I have $25,000 in a line that helps me do what I do. And there's some advertising that's paid for elsewhere, so that helps support what we do. So, like, some advertising for even projects that we have to do as part of the scope, so.
I feel better now that you have a budget.
Yes, ma'am. If you want to lift that budget up some more, that would be great too, Dr. Emanuel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concern? Ms. Fields?
I do want to say you do an excellent job.
Thank you.
Promoting on social media.
Thank you so much.
So, I'm ready to see your videos, what those will be like.
They're gonna be wonderful.
And you're right, that is the new trend.
It is. Thank you.
And I'll echo what Ms. Christie said. You do a great job, Jessica.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Next up, we have Superintendent's Advisory Council, Ms. Jessica Sealy as well.
So, this is a, uh-oh. Can they still see this? So, this is a new initiative we're gonna launch this year, the Superintendent's Advisory Council. It's gonna meet quarterly. And so, the purpose for this is gonna be, it's gonna serve, Superintendent's Advisory Council will serve as a collaborative body of stakeholders, students, educators, parents, and community members who provide input, feedback, and ideas to support our school district's priorities, enhance transparency, and improve outcomes for all students. So, that's the purpose. Again, we're gonna meet quarterly. We're thinking about 6 o'clock is gonna be the time. And then, we're gonna cater a meal so that everybody's happy and not hungry. Our members, we are looking at high school students. The high school students, one for each high school. And ideally, it could be somebody like in the SGA. And then, we'll have our district-level Teacher of the Year, Principal of the Year, Assistant Principal, and District Teacher Assistant of the Year. Every school will also select a community member to serve. And then, high schools will have both a community member and that student I mentioned. So, we're gonna have pretty good representation from the community, from the schools, and from our, from our educators as well. So, that's what we're looking at. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Craig.
Ms. Jessica, it's not really a question. I think it might be a good time to squeeze this in. This committee, Mike, could look at this. I've had people ask, we know we got open house, I think, that Thursday. And one of the comments I get is the families that have children in different grades. Could we look at going to two-days open houses or something like that? Because some families have three schools to go to in that timeframe, and it does put a strain on them. And maybe even looking at the times. I know at one time, if you did it from, school day being eight hours, teachers might go in that day at 11 o'clock, and they left at 7:00. Or they went in at, you know, whatever time, 10:00, and left at 6:00. They worked things like that. So, that's just something I'd like next year to just look at having an open house on more than one day, taking into consideration those families.
Thank you. We can, we can look into that.
Dr. Terry Locklear?
Thank you for this report, Ms. Jessica. So, you, you said something about maybe a parent?
It'll be community members. So, I'm, I'm sure parents will be a part of that.
Inner, okay. So, each school have one community member slash parent?
I think it could be a parent. It might not have to be a parent, to be like a leader in the community. Maybe, I mean, it could be a pastor or somebody. Yeah. Because you'll have 30, over 30, you know, and it'll get to be a pretty big group.
Okay, thank you.
Pretty, pretty big group there.
And Ms. Jessica, I'll make all the board members aware that it's not listed in there, but any board member can come to this as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. We invite you to come. And we're gonna finalize those dates and everything. And information will be forthcoming on that, forthcoming on that, for sure. Any other questions from me and my staff?
Thank you, Ms. Jessica.
Thank you so much.
Next up, we have Monthly Impact Award Staff Recognition, Mr. Jamal Campbell.
Good evening Superintendent Dr. Williamson, Board Chair, Mr. Trey Britt, and members of the school board. On behalf of the Human Resource Department, I am excited to share a new recognition initiative launching this September, the Public Schools of Robson County Impact Award. Each month, at our regular board meeting, we will honor one classified and one certified employee who has made significant positive contributions within their, within their school and the broader community. The Impact Award celebrates those who demonstrate exceptional dedication to student success, actively support the professional growth of other colleagues, and embodies our district's One Team, One Goal model by fostering a supportive, thriving environment for all. Each month, schools across the district will nominate deserving employees, and the selected honorees will be recognized here before the board for their exceptional service and commitment. I would like to personally and sincerely thank Dr. Williamson and Mr. Trey Britt for their support in making this initiative a reality. We're also deeply grateful for our local business partners, Sign City, for sponsoring the monthly plaques, and cakes and pastries along with Chick-fil-A for graciously providing monthly gifts to our honorees. Through this recognition, we aim to highlight the outstanding people who make the Public Schools of Robson County a premier district to work for. And once again, I'm excited about this. This is gonna be a great thing for our district to highlight these wonderful employees within our district, starting next month. And so, the intent is that we'll make sure that it's even. So, there'll be three representation months for high school, three representation months for middle school, and three representation months for elementary school. So, from September through May. And so, get ready for that. And so, professors will receive those links this week as well. And so, we're excited for that recognition for our staff. So, thank you again for your support of that.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Jamal. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Williamson real quick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Last month, you approved a new principal for Parkton Elementary. She was in the mountains, I think, on that. And so, tonight, I'm gonna present her to you and give opportunity to make a few comments. Ms. T.
Like I said, I'm just here to formally introduce myself. My name is Christine Trascenti, otherwise known as Ms. T. And I'm very excited to be continuing the work at Parkton as the new principal, already serving as, as he likes to let me know. We had a great meet and greet the other night, and we have been working hard at getting everything prepared for the school year. So, I'm very excited, and it's nice to meet all of you.
And I, and I will say, Ms. T, you were, I was at that meet and greet, and the staff and the community has balled in, and I'm looking forward to some great things in Parkton.
They're good people. They're good people in Parkton.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. T.
Thank you.
Next up is public comments. I'm taking it we don't have any, because I don't have one. We do not have any. All right, moving on to action items. First one is a North Carolina CAT Honored Educator Scholarship. Dr. Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. Last month, as information, we did share the NCAT Honor Education Scholarship. The fully endowed scholarship is $25,000. We did indicate that we do have those funds on hand, right, Erica? Thank you. And so, we asked that you spend some time the past month considering, look at the key features. One is tribute to educators individually or to the board as a whole, funding for professional development, classroom enhancement in amount of $250. And again, the endowment requirement is $25,000, which we can provide. So, my request tonight is that you approve that and that you, as a board, determine how you want the endowment to be named.
Oh, Mr. Bradley Phillips?
I make a motion to accept. Does anybody have a name in mind, like, who to name this for?
If not, I would make a recommendation that the endowment be for Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robson County, that for the entire board would be my recommendation, if you ask.
Dr. Terry?
So, if we, if we fund $25,000, it, it says recipients will receive a 250 cash award for classroom projects enhancing education. I'm wondering, well, what does that look like for us in terms of an investment?
It is a one-time investment of $25,000, fully endowed.
Mr. Chair?
Is that Mr. Henry?
Yes. First of all, I want to apologize. Mr. Teal just left my home. First of all, I want to apologize. Uh, Mr. Teal just left my home. He just got my computer going. But, um, I, I agree with that motion. If Mr. Terry will go ahead and finish it out, I'll second it.
Mr. Terry didn't make a motion. Bradley made the motion to.
Or missed, I missed Bradley. I'm sorry.
Okay, we got a motion by Bradley and a second by Mr. Henry Brewer.
Could, uh, Mr. Phillips, could you just clarify your motion? Is it to accept the endowment and then name it for the Board of Education for Public Schools Robinson County? Okay.
All those in favor? All opposed? Discussion?
So, my concern is, we have $25,000 to give to an endowment, but we can't put a shelter up at Roland Norman? We can't fill potholes, but we're gonna give $25,000 for an endowment when we haven't fixed home yet?
The endowment would actually serve teachers from the Public Schools of Robinson County. So, we're actually making investment in our employees.
I understand that, but we, we have things at home that need to be taken care of first.
And that comes from a different fund source out of capital. So, two different funds. We couldn't use this money to do that anyway.
Well, what could we use this money for in-house?
It's actually coming out of a contingency fund that we set up that's unbudgeted, um, in terms of projects. And so, in the past, we've used funds for this.
So, Chairman Britt, we need to take into consideration that if this does pass and we go to our local county asking for more funds, that we can justify why we gave up $25,000.
Okay. Mr. Terry.
Is this coming from a local fund?
Yes.
We voted all those in favor? We're gonna vote again, or you good? Can I have a recount of the votes for him? All those in favor, please raise your hand? All opposed?
Uh, Mr. Brewer, could you restate? You voted in the affirmative, right?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great. Thank you.
B, uh, District Mental Health Plan, Ms. Jennifer Freeman and Dr. Sherry Herndon.
Good evening, Chairman Britt, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, and Board Members. At this time, I would like to yield the District Mental Health Review Plan over to Dr. Sherry Herndon. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Britt, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, and Board Members. I stand before you to request approval of our mental health plan, which is aligned with the school-based mental health policy. As you know, a student's mental health is affected or their wellness is, it impacts their learning. It could impact be, impact behavior, attendance, as well as social and emotional well-being. Dr. Emmanuel, do you have any questions?
Rather than you having to read all of it to us, if, if the board doesn't mind, I have some specific questions. Okay. May I do that?
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned, it's mentioned someplace in here, so don't ask me what page, that we have diagnostic information on the children, you know, we have information on. I'm curious as to know where that information came from. Is it just discipline records, dah 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 dah?
So, we have several different sources. We have the Classworks Social and Emotional Screener. This past year, students in grades K through 12 were assessed. I think it is in grades K to, the teachers complete that survey, and then, in grades 3 through 12, the students complete the assessment. And the, the student support team at the schools can review that data and determine students who are at risk. Um, we also have behavior data that we look at, counselor data, any social worker data. It could be attendance data. It could be counselor check-in, check-out data. So, different sources.
Okay, there's another, a resource that was mentioned in here. May I continue on? The, the resource that was mentioned here that you're using, I'm not sure if it's the Hazel Project or whatever, and it's a tele market, I mean, tele health, like, and it's paid for by Medicaid, Medicaid, Medicaid and personal insurance. Do you have a, any kind of other funds? Maybe a partnership with anybody that would pay for kids to use that telehealth? Because some people, some parents do not have Medicaid, or some do not have personal insurance.
So, all schools would be included in this initiative. This is a partnership with, um, North Carolina Public Schools, and it is no charge for our students.
Maybe I read it wrong, but it said that they collected their money through Medicaid and personal insurance. And my, my, oh, I was curious about parents who did not have that, but so, you might need to check that.
So, we have discussed that. We did have a virtual meeting, um, with representatives from Hazel Health. If there are any students who do not have Medicaid or any other type of insurance, they still can be served.
Okay. I think that's, and you, you do have that parent permission. Am I wrong or right?
In order for Hazel Health to be involved or any teletherapy services to be provided, there will be a consent form on file.
So, they would have the fact, the consent form ahead of time. The reason I'm asking this question, there have been instances when we thought kids were suicidal, and it took a while to try to get some professional help. So, this is great that you can actually call up a therapist and get them pronto, right, in 30 minutes, 10, 15 minutes, to try to get help for children. So, I, I think this is a great thing. I was just worried about kids that, who didn't have coverage, you know, that couldn't receive that service. So, I'm glad that you've had that discussion.
And we also, we have piloted gaggle therapy at, um, our, at RAS this year. So, that is one initiative we want to continue next year.
A couple more minor things, and then I want to make a motion if the board doesn't mind. The Trillium, T-R-I-L-L-U-M. Is that a new company? I've never heard of it. Tell me about that.
So, Trillium, that is the, so, we have Monarch.
Yeah.
And Trillium is now, everything falls under Trillium now. It's the overarching, uh, name.
All right, listen, if there's anything else. Um, I think there's all, Mr. Chair and Board Members. I spent a lot of time going through this, and this follows an exemplary plan. It addresses, I think, everything that we need to address. It follows the law. And I, I would make a motion if the board would allow me. Okay, go ahead, before I make the motion.
Ms. Melissa Oceans, right here, Ms. Melissa Oceans? Okay. Ms. Christie Fields.
On the Say Something Anonymous, how do we ensure that this is going to remain anonymous? As it relates to your staff?
Mr. Bobby, would you like to?
Chairman Britt, Dr. Williamson, Board Members. So, the Say, See Something, Say Something Anonymous, uh, reporting tool is something that's provided by the state. Uh, a student or staff member would call in to a 1-800 number. The operator on the other line would take that report and then funnel it to the school. So, at no point in time were those phone calls coming to us. There's no identifiable information. It just simply goes to that call center, and the call center would forward it to where the information to the appropriate people at the school.
And is that the same for gaggle alerts? Is that the same protocol?
With, with the gaggle alerts, um, the school team receives an email or a text, and they have time to respond to that alert. There is a team at each school who will receive that alert, and based on the alert, those two team members will respond. If they do not respond in a certain amount of time, uh, I will receive an alert along with Ms. Freeman and Mr. Phillip Oxenden to follow up.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Alex, you, you and I talked, uh, last week, uh, other districts that your law firm serve, use Hazel, and so.
They've, they've started providing services, yes.
And, and then, Dr. Emmanuel, to your point with Hazel Health, our next step in this process is to share with you a contract that we asked Alex to, to draw up, and is in editing process now. So, we'll have that contract in front of you as a board next month. And then, from there, I hope that we can approve that contract.
Get your button, Dr. Emmanuel.
I, I make a motion that we adopt the mental health plan as written and presented.
Got a motion made by Dr. Emmanuel, a second by Melissa Oceans. All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Next up, we have spring policy updates with Mr. Bobby Locklear.
Good evening again, Chairman Britt, Dr. Williamson, Board Members. So, on July 29th, our Policy Committee met to review all of our spring updates from 2025. So, our Policy, uh, Policy Committee reviewed, um, looked over the, looked over the spring updates. And I believe at that Policy Committee meeting, um, the committee was in agreement to approve all of the spring updates, as long as we exclude the updates, the Policy 2302, and we will communicate that to the School Board Association once we send these over to them. And if I'm not mistaken, I do believe we want to handle our cell phone policy separate from the spring updates.
Ms. Melissa, you got a question?
So, we're asking the full board for approval of our spring updates.
I got a motion by Ms. Melissa Oceans, a second by Mr. Craig. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
So, uh, when we came in, there was a, a paper on our desk about contractors and the, how we retain those. Is that, is this information have anything to do with policy?
No, no, that's closed. Thank you.
So, also, Chairman Britt, at our Policy Committee on that same day, we discussed Policy 4318, Use of Wireless Communication Devices based upon Ha, House Bill 959, which requires all PSUs develop a policy by September 1 that outlines, uh, use of cell phones or wireless communication devices during the school day, instructional day, I'm sorry. So, at, at our last meeting, we reviewed a, um, recommendation from the School Board Association. Two recommendations or revisions were recommended during that policy meeting, and I've given you the updated policy with those revisions in it. The first revision, um, would be on page 1, A2, the addition of smartwatches to be added to the definition of a wireless communication device. On page 3, uh, under B, there was the recommendation to add, to change the last sentence on when can a child use a cell phone, uh, in the classroom. And that's, uh, our policy will read, "Teachers and administrators may authorize individual students to use their devices, provided that they supervise the students in the event of emergencies such as, but not limited to, personal health emergency, arranged after-school transportation, or need for school to communicate with parents or guardians." And so, we are asking for approval of Policy 4318 to fulfill the requirement of House Bill, uh, 959.
Mr. Craig?
I make a motion to approve 4318.
Got a motion by Mr. Craig? Second by Dr. Emmanuel. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bob. Next up, we have school fundraisers. Ms. Erica Sipser.
Good evening, Chairman Britt, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, and Board Members. You should have had in your packet a list of fundraisers we've received so far from our schools for approval, and I can answer any questions anyone has about those at this time.
I have a motion by Ms. Crystal Monroe for the school fundraisers, a second by Mr. Bradley Phillips. All those in favor? Any opposed? Ms. Erica, Monthly Financial Report.
And that's also included in your packet. I did want to mention, um, that we have received a mini-budget bill. I'm sure more information will be coming from that. The biggest impact to public schools at this point, it only authorizes, uh, step increases for our employees. So, at this point, there are no other raises for the staff yet until we get a full budget. But that part of the mini-budget bill did authorize step increases. So, we will be moving forward processing that in, um, our department.
Ms. Christie Fields.
So, the, the academic coaches and, and assistant principals that are attending the leadership training this week, what line and item are they being paid from in the budget?
For attendance, the principals don't get paid to attend.
Now, these are the academic coaches and assistant principals that are attending.
They're not being paid for attendance.
We're trading off days with them, and they can use those days during the year.
So, they're getting comp time, basically?
I don't know that it's comp time that we would define it that way.
Mr. Terry.
For, for, uh, assistant principals and academic coaches that are on contract, I guess they're contracted 10-month employees, APs, and.
Correct. That's correct.
Do those contracts have beginning and end dates?
I'm not sure if they have specific beginning and end dates. They may have a month. I would have to ask Mr. Jamal.
I'll answer that one. Our academic coaches are not on contract. Uh, our APs, those contracts do have a beginning and ending date. For an initial administrator, it's a two-year contract. After that, it can be up to four years.
Do they have a date like August the 1st, or?
And, and, and a lot of cases, it actually, in some cases, end up being two and a half years. Depends on when we approve them, uh, with that beginning date or four and a half. But yes, there's a beginning date.
Are, are they all the same, is it all the same, um, date each year for APs? Or academic coaches? I mean, I understand what you're saying. It's a two-year contract, but it, does it have a specific date? If you're a 10-month employee.
If you're a 10-month employee, in most cases, you're gonna start on August the 19th. Unless you're custodian, you might start, um, at a different time. But like our teachers and assistant principals would be starting on August the 19th. Unless they're at the early college, then they would have the early college date.
Yeah. Terry, I think your question is a calendar question, really, not a contract question. And those APs are 10-month employees. Historically, we've always worked with them to come in, um, additional two weeks that we would trade that off. So, if your question is, should APs be in our training at this point, that's a yes. But that's a calendar question, I think, that you're asking more so than. But that's a calendar question, I think, that you're asking more so than contract.
Well, that's not necessarily my question. Were they paid to attend the training last year?
I don't, I don't actually recall. I'd have to look up and see. I'm not sure. So your question is, should they be receiving the training, payment for training, attending training?
Right. Okay, thank you.
If I do recall, I don't have a motion for the monthly financial report. I got a motion by Ms. Melissa Oceans, a second by Mr. Craig. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Ms. Melissa Oceans?
I move that the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robson County go into closed session for the purposes of discussing certified and classified personnel North Carolina General Statute 143 through 318, point 2A1 and 6, and to consult with attorney retained by the Board in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between attorney and the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robson County, and to discuss the pending litigation matter of Chloe Oxenine versus the Robson County Board of Education, 23-CVS-003094, under North Carolina General Statute 143 through 318, point 1, I'm sorry, point 1IA13.
I got a motion by Ms. Melissa Oceans. Second. We're now in closed session.
Motion that we modify the agenda to amended EC contracts for 25, 26 school year.
I got a motion by Mr. Terry Locklear and a second by Ms. Christy Fields.
I'd like to make.
Dr. Manuel.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend the contract of overflow is that name of it. Just for one semester, change it from one semester.
I got a substitute motion by Dr. Manuel, second by Ms. Melissa Oceans. We will vote on the substitute motion first.
I thought we had to vote on the agenda.
Neither of those is on your agenda right now. The substitute motion is on the floor.
Substitute motion being on the floor. All those in favor of Dr. Manuel's motion?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Alex. I thought you said we had to vote to amend the agenda.
I think that, Dr. Emmanuel, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but your motion was to amend, was a substitute motion to amend the agenda for the overflow contract.
Yes, sir.
And then this will be a vote on the contract specifically for overflow. So I believe that Dr. Emmanuel was amending the agenda to just add the overflow contract.
I misheard you, Dr. Emmanuel. I didn't hear you. You sit too far from me, you lie.
You need to come over here and sit aside of me so I can keep you straight and me straight.
We'll get a motion on the floor for me to be moved over there. Thank you.
What do you want me to do, Mr. Turner? I'll redo it.
All right, now we've got a motion, substitute motion by Dr. Manuel passed. Now we need a motion to.
Vote on the.
Approve on the overflow contract. I got a motion, I got a motion by Ms. Melissa Oceans.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bradley Phillips. Discussion. Ms. Christy Fields.
Is this to put this amendment in there for a semester? This is what this is for?
I took, and Dr. Emmanuel can correct me if I'm wrong, but that she was asking about the overflow contract that was presented to the board members. I took your statement about the semester to mean the one presented, but to be clear, is a full year contract with a semester opt out, correct? With the language presented to the board in closed session on the piece of paper?
Yes, what the amendment is, it is a one-year contract with a six-month opt out.
Need a motion?
But we have a motion on the floor to approve the contract at this point. It was by Ms. Ocean and seconded by Mr. Phillips.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve certified and classified personnel. Crystal with a motion, second with Mr. Craig. Need a motion on closed session minutes?
Yeah.
Need a motion on closed session minutes? Ms. Melissa Ocean, second by Mr. Craig Lowry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say what? We don't have to vote on any legal ones.
No.
No. Good.
Thank you.
Oh, gotcha. Anybody else good? Everybody else good? Okay, a couple of things. One, when do you want to have our board retreat? It will be here at central office. We're looking at a Friday again. If you would, get out the calendar and let's discuss it real quick. A Friday, a Friday afternoon from 12 to 5. I'm open if y'all would tell me. I was, I was thinking more along the lines in September was what I was thinking, but I work at y'all's pleasure. Y'all tell me what you would like to see.
Twenty ninth of this month. That's two weeks.
How about September the 12th? Dr. Williamson, does that give you and your cabinet enough time? We'll be, you'll be out. Okay, September 12th will not work.
What date you got?
Nineteenth.
September the 19th, that is a Friday from 12 to 5 here at central office. We will be here. Has anybody got any problems, concerns with that from 12 to 5? On an, you can be virtual. We need a, Mr. Henry, are you good with that?
Yes.
September the 19th, 12 to 5 will be our board retreat. We've got a lot of issues and conversations that need to be had. And cabinet, are y'all good with that as well? All right, September the 19th. Need a motion to adjourn? Go ahead, Dr. Manuel.
That will be at the retreat. I hope that the curriculum instruction, that they look at all new things that have come up in clarity, and that will save us from having to do a big curriculum meeting over and over and over. Thank you.
All right, I got a motion by Mr. John Simmons to adjourn, a second by Mr. Craig Lowry. All those in favor?
Aye.